As long as at your end it's in sync now, I think it's better.
Alright.
But I'm through my computer audio, so if it starts breaking up.
When we come to it, just sharing your screen, I'm afraid to touch anything at this point.
Okay.
And we can call to order the school board finance, June 1st Finance Committee meeting. So on our agenda today is just to review the, so at our last meeting, school board meeting, we made some recommendations to the Leadership Council, just to go back and look at a few different areas, and sort of to come back with some adjustments, what that would look like, based on our recommendations. And so, the purpose of this meeting is to review that material, and just give us the opportunity to ask questions. For anyone who is dialed in from home, or watching, first of all, just want to apologize for the technical difficulties. Thank you for being patient with us. We will do public comment at the end of our meeting. So it's scheduled to go from 3:00 to 4:30. I'm not sure if we'll need the whole time, but we will do public comment at the very end. For, if you want to follow along, if you go to our website, under the Finance Committee Agenda, you'll find the materials that we'll review on the call today. And if you are not interested in speaking, but would like to make a public comment, or if you have to leave the meeting, you can send your comment to publiccomment@scarbrowschools.org, and we'll go ahead and read that in for the record. So Kate, if you want to go ahead and bring that up, I think we can sort of start to talk through that. And I guess while Kate is doing it.
It looks like I don't have the option to show. Take it back. I got it. Never mind. Found it. Sorry.
Okay.
Carry on.
No worries. So what we had thought, in terms of an approach for the meeting today, I know you guys have put you on the call, but also the rest of the Leadership Council have put a lot of time into getting this to us, and getting it to us in advance of the meeting. So really appreciate that. We actually have all had the opportunity to go through it in quite a bit of detail, because you sent it on Friday, so we utilized the weekend and this morning to dig into that. So I don't want you to think your efforts went unutilized. So we did appreciate that. And because we had the time to go through that, I think, I don't know that we need to use this meeting to cover every detail. I think maybe just a refresh, and I can kind of read back to you how we're interpreting it, and then we can just open it up to questions. I know I have some questions, as do Alicia and April, I'm sure. So if everyone's okay with that approach, we'll start there. Cool. And actually, I should probably just say that, I know this has been a really long process, and I don't think a process is getting any shorter, or any less difficult. I don't know that we're in a position in the meeting today, to necessarily make any recommendations or suggestions, that will, I guess, give finite recommendations that we'll give to the Board on Thursday night. And the reason for that is because there's still a couple of things in motion, that we're looking for some more information on from Town Council, that are, I believe, on their agenda for Wednesday night, to be covered off. So a couple of those items are, whether or not we could utilize impact fees to fund some of the planning and development work for a new school. Whether or not we could set up sort of a separate COVID-19 response fund. So right now, the way you guys, or I guess prior to this proposal, you had that sort of scheduled, and the added into the budget before we took the reductions. So one other thing we had talked about was, can we actually take that out of the reduction proposal, and almost use that as a separate item, to say, you know, we've met your goal, but also, we have to recognize the times we're in, and there's going to be additional costs because of that, and sort of take it as a separate bucket. And then the third item was around capital improvement, and sort of getting a little bit more clear direction from them, as to whether or not we can actually pull more from capital, rather than our operating budget. So I know that, in this recommendation, you guys have put forward some additional capital items. So assuming that we do get the formal go-ahead to do that, then we can pull a little bit more from capital, instead of our operating budget. Previously, we were under the impression that we had to hold to the limits, which they agreed to at their first reading. So we have, we'll take information that we get from this meeting, information that we get from the Town Council meeting on Wednesday night, and then we'll have another Finance Committee meeting on Thursday, before our Board meeting, where we'll come together and figure out what we want to do, what kind of recommendations we want to make, as a Finance Committee to the overall Board on Thursday. Any questions on that? Okay. Cool. So Kate, how I am interpreting this, and April and Alicia, if you guys are interpreting this differently, you can kind of shout, but I know Kate, if you want to scroll down just a little bit. Yeah, keep going. Awesome. So at our Board meeting, the recommendations that we made, basically, how we're interpreting this, is you guys put all those things back in, and that came to an amount of $633,000. And then, based on the conversation we had, we said, go ahead and pull out the COVID-19 additions, which were about $433,000, which brings us to a total, oh sorry, you've updated the items in motion, and so with the combination of taking out the COVID-19, and updating the items in motion, there's still about $150,000-ish dollars that we need to find, in order to hit the current Town Council goal.
Sarah, I guess I do have a question. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So before we go past the COVID question, which I know needs some work from the Town Council side, as far as what they, how they think that looks, is it your understanding that we would still have the $430,000 in our operating budget, but we would consider it separately from them? Or are we talking about like a completely different fund?
Based on the conversation that I think Leanne had this morning with Paul, I don't know that it's necessarily a different fund. I think the way that I'm thinking about it is, if you remember last year, with our budget conversations, we had said, yep, we'll work towards this goal, whatever that goal was. However, if there are circumstances that come up, such as enrollment, that we need to add certain things back in, then we just need to be a little bit flexible. So we'll meet the goal, and then we'll add to it if we need to. And I think that we're approaching this in a similar way. So we'll meet the goal, just based on our operating budget current, and then we'll say, but given COVID-19, and the uncertainty of what school will look like when we go back to the fall, there's some additional costs that are going to be associated with that. And so, here's an additional $430,000 that we need to put into our operating budget, so that it's there to support. But we don't want that to be considered necessarily as part of not meeting the goal. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's exactly what I was wondering about. Like, where does it fit into the picture of the budget, as we need to approve it? So it's, it would still be operating budget, it would still be, you know, appropriated funds, but it wouldn't be like a, oh, you failed to meet the target.
Yeah, and I should be clear, that this is not something necessarily that we've agreed with Town Council. We've discussed it with them, and kind of given them the heads up that this is how we're thinking of approaching it, because the cost is so significant, right? It's not like it's just $25,000.
Right.
Pretty significant. So, yeah, we'll present it that way, and we'll see how they take it.
Okay.
The question that I have, if I can articulate it, is that, when we, so I was in support of sort of separating that money out, because I think it helps to show where we are in reality, and that we need new investments in order to even get to baseline. But where are we, like, what's the target date for presenting that portion of the budget to Town Council, to them, and then getting their feedback, in terms of how we're going to meet the funds of the COVID, the 430 from the COVID? So if we have to come up with 430 for COVID, pending sort of federal reimbursement, or state reimbursement, for example, or further guidance from the Town Council, when does that refinement occur in the process?
If you have to put the $430,000 into your operating budget, and get approval for it that way, then you would want to do that at your second reading, so that it's part of what the Town Council was talking about at their second reading. Because that would have to, if it's in your K-12 operating budget, then it has to go to the voters. So you want to, you would want to have that be part of what you guys approve for your regular general fund budget.
To your point then, Kate, if that were the case, then would we have to find another $430,000 in cuts?
I think what Sarah's saying is, here's our budget, here's the $2 million reduction that we made in our budget, and oh gosh, we have to add $430,000 back. So we've met the target with what we knew, and now we're adding back $430,000 to cover the cost of COVID stuff.
So I guess that's the part that I'm confused about. Where's the part that we go, oh, here's our budget, we met your budget, and now we've got to add? When does that part occur?
We'd have to articulate it all as part of the second reading, in my opinion. It would be the Board saying, here are the reductions that we're making, in response to what the Town Council has asked us at their first reading, and here's our bottom line. But our bottom line is $430,000 higher than that number.
Would it be worthwhile to request a Joint Finance Committee meeting, Sarah? Or are we past that point?
So the other, yes, I do think potentially that could be valuable. I think what I've heard is that one of the scenarios on the table is that Town Council delays the second reading, which could mean that we could delay our second reading, until we have more information from them. So that would, I think, give time for a Joint Finance Committee meeting, before our second reading. Or regardless of what they do, we can choose to delay ours, in order to try and get a Joint Finance Committee in, before we have our second reading vote.
Is there...
Ultimately, if they go first, right, so if they have their second reading before us, then we definitely need to have either, well, we need to have a Joint Finance Committee meeting, so that we can express to them where we are with the budget process. Otherwise, our way of communicating that to them is through our second reading.
And what does that look like, if it's in our second reading, and it's inconsistent with what they're doing?
I think...
I have never, I don't know.
I think we could craft it, in a way, similar to how Town Council kind of crafts some of their language, and just be really clear, and say, very explicitly, like, this is the, this is what the School Board is approving at our second reading. We are approving a, the budget that was given to us by the Town Council at the first reading, to meet the 2% goal, which now, it's like, we've seen so many different versions of the budget, but it's roughly that $2 million reduction. So we would approve a budget that was in line with that $2 million reduction, and then have language in our motion, that said, we are seeking additional approval of $400,000, whatever, $1,000 for the purposes of COVID-related expenses, in excess of, and then whatever our net budget that we're asking, whatever our net budget is that we're approving, we would just ask for that, like, very clearly, in excess of that number. And...
And what happens if they reject that?
Then I think we're back to Diane's question, which is, then we need to find an additional $400,000 in our budget, to make room for the COVID stuff.
Yeah, and what's happened in the past is that the Board has met after the Town Council's second reading and vote, and that's when we get the bottom line number of what's being allocated to the schools for their budget. And sometimes, that number matches with what we've done at second reading, and sometimes it doesn't. So if it were the case that we gave a larger number to the Council, and they said, no, you can't have that, then we would have to meet again, and figure out where that extra money was going to be coming from, before it goes to the voters.
And then what happens? There's a third reading?
No, you're making, you're making another vote to amend the budget, based on what the Council gives you.
Okay.
So in your first and second reading, you've passed the School Board's budget, but then the Town Council says, you actually have X dollars, not Y dollars, and so you go back and you vote on where those dollars come from.
Okay. Then I, then I continue to support the, that concept. I just, I just worry about how information gets spread out in our community, and that people won't necessarily understand what's happening. So I think it's important that we are pretty clear in our messaging, what we're doing, and why. So I think it's important that we are pretty clear in our in our messaging what we're doing and why. Um, because there could be potentially, you know, we're in the clear and then four hundred over four hundred thousand dollars worth of cuts that that need to happen again. Uh, that worries me.
Is there a way to get even a thumbs up behind the scenes? If this is even realistic with the council before we make any assumptions? Because I'm worried if 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 it's mostly thumbs down, we might as well know that upfront.
Yes, this is kind of the purpose of us reconvening on Thursdays. We've asked them to have a discussion on it at their meeting tomorrow night.
Okay, so I'll wait and for that. Thank you.
And, yeah, I'm I'm not sure that we'll get any direction, but we've asked multiple times over email and asked them to put it on their agenda for tomorrow night, so.
Another way that you could present a piece of, um, of information that that takes into account the the concept that Sarah's talking about would be to have two versions ready for second reading and to say, you know, okay, so if we need to cut deeper and we need to find four hundred thirty thousand dollars, here's what it looks like. And if we don't, then here's what it looks like. Um, so that you're you're poised to communicate clearly in either direction.
There's just the the amount of iterations that we're we're trying to do this year is insane, right? I mean, if we hit this target goal, if we hit that target goal, and then, well, what do you want us to do with all the COVID money and and that iteration?
I mean, I think it's fair if we laid it out, just like we had the tier, you know, that initial spreadsheet with all the tiers on it. I think it if we as a school board finance committee prioritize those tiers, I think it's fair to present that and say, this is where we're at with the budget that we approved. And if we need to take four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, then this is what it's going to look like. And town council will be able to make an educated decision on whether or not they want to increase our budget by four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to allow for the COVID or whether they look at the cuts we're going to have to make. And because that's because I think that's a that's a fair question for them to want to know. They're going to want to know the impact of approving that additional money. But we've already, I mean, there's so you're so right, Alicia, because there are so many versions of the budget now. But I do think we need to have it very late clearly laid out what the tiers are still so that people know what they're voting on in terms of whether it's a budget that they can support.
But but now are we doing a a tier, uh, the the tier that brings us to the two percent? And then with with a with and without a COVID contingency?
Yeah, I guess, yeah. But I I agree, and and I I agree with that approach, though, April. And I think, um, maybe that's what we spend our time Thursday is kind of putting together as a working session what those proposals would look like. Because at that point, I think we'll we'll hopefully have, you know, the information we need from Sandy and Kate and Diane and the rest of the leadership council. And it's really just direction from town council that we need at this point. I just did a scroll of the attendee list to see if, um, any of them were on, but it doesn't look like it.
I know this is going too far out on on a limb, but if the council postpones their second reading, does that impact the referendum date?
No idea. I can't imagine that they I don't I know one of the things that we always question, it came up at communications committee the other day, was, um, this idea that people can take their can request an absentee ballot, um, that is not that does not reflect the actual approved budget on it. And I read the newsletter that the town council sent out today that we all, if you subscribe, you got the town council newsletter. And it was the wording of it was a little different, and it made it sound like you can request an absentee ballot, but that Todi won't mail them until the referendum number is set. So she is kind of it, but that maybe that's just my interpretation of of how it's read. But I can't imagine that they are going to move. Yeah, what is what is the timeline?
Yeah, well, it's a wonder, and it's something that I'm sure we'll hear more about when the town council meets. I think that the the ballots are interesting in that in the past, they don't have a number on them. They just say, do you approve the budget that was passed by the town council on X date? And so, you know, you could have a ballot in your hand that would be valid, um, for a vote after you knew what the number was. Yeah, I'm sorry, that's kind of a diversion, but it's a wonder for me. If if we we continue to postpone the votes, then what happens at the to the the end game of all this?
Yep, no, it's fair question, and hopefully that'll they'll discuss that as part of their decision.
Sarah, I think we lost you there again.
I don't hear her.
I see your hand moving.
Okay. And is it we ask? To look into in some options and.
Sarah, you're you're going in and out. Is it me or did I miss?
More detail, start firing on questions if we have.
I cannot hear Sarah either.
I can either.
Sarah, we've lost your audio again.
Okay.
So I'm wondering if Sarah should try to log back in to see if that's more successful? Or can you, um, do the audio piece on your phone and the video piece on your computer?
I don't know if she can hear you.
I I can hear you guys now.
Oh, good.
Hey, there you are.
We can hear you.
Sorry.
We missed a big piece of of important stuff because your hand was moving. But there were no words.
I was moving.
Your hands in your mouth.
Sorry, this is throwing away. I I was just saying, um, the remainder of the document is, you know, you guys sort of responding to our request for more information or looking at areas that we had suggested, um, for additional cost savings or reductions, rather. Um, and so I I just was asking April and Alicia if if they felt that they needed any further discussion or for you guys to elaborate on any of those areas, or if you just were comfortable opening up the questions.
I was going to throw out, uh, two things. One is that, um, I didn't, we didn't include any bonded items on the list for consideration, but there has been a lot of conversation about the high school STEM lab. And so there's a there's a story about what that is, what that project is and why it was requested. And then that leads to the facility storage space for the stuff that's in where the lab belongs. So that was one piece I wanted to make sure that you had noticed. And then the other thing was that, um, you know, we we can go back through the full capital budget and find other things and talk about those. And Todd's ready to to speak to whatever's on there in his area. Um, and then the other piece was that just before we met, we got this really cool new, um, spreadsheet from Sean Bushway from Power School. And I linked that in at the bottom here. This is page eight um, of enrollment and class size data by phase. And he he charted it out with the individual classrooms, and I thought that was, um, some super useful information. So that's in there now, too.
Before we dive into this document, I just want to make sure it's it's hard real. It's so detailed that I think this is a hard document on the screen that people know that they can access it on home. If they go to the standing committees, finance link, and then supporting documents, it's posted there so you can follow along at home.
Very good point. Yeah, it's, um, there's a PDF on there uh, that's posted, but it and it also includes all these links. So this is what we're looking at is a live Google Doc that you can click on the link and open it up. But if you're reading from home, all of those links are just at the end of the document, so you can still see them.
So so to answer your question, Sarah, I'm I'm happy to just dig right in because I've reviewed the docket document thoroughly over the weekend.
Yep, me too.
Awesome, go for it.
Actually, if somebody else wants to start, I'm trying to pull it up on my own screen so I can scroll around in it. If you're if you're handier than I am. It's kind of tough.
Yeah, um, I guess one question I had, Kate, and this relates to your, um, point about the facility garage for Todd. That three hundred and ninety two thousand in the budget that's scheduled to be bonded for the STEM lab, does that include the facility space or is the facility space an additional line item?
Facility spaces is separate line item. It's under facility support equipment, and I believe it's two hundred and fifty total.
Can you repeat that, Kate? Was that that for the just the building, two fifty?
Yeah, let let me, um.
I actually think it's two ninety nine is the line item.
Right, I'm getting the detail for the line item here so you can see.
Thank you.
Can you see the new and improved little page here?
Is this the link? Is this the CIP link in the document?
Yeah, this is the CIP detail, the first one.
Oh, okay.
And it has, um, you know, as you can see, it has a description of everything to do with the the first reading budget, um, right here at the top of this page.
What page is that? Do you know?
Well, I can't get you guys out of my way to see.
Page five.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Five, yep.
I shouldn't be allowed to drive. Uh, so the STEM create STEM lab space is three hundred thousand on this chart. It actually ended up being three ninety two because we got a firm quote. Um, and so that's where the ninety two thousand was added at our first reading. Um, and then under facility support equipment on the next page, you've got some replacement floor scrubbers, um, you've got the truck, and then you've got two hundred and fifty thousand for the garage. Um, the two ninety nine is the auto scrubbers and the, uh, storage garage. And then fifty five was called out separately under a vehicle line. It's kind of confusing going from this to the what's in the budget book because those are just single line items, but this has a lot more detail about what we're we're putting in those lines.
So then when I go and cross-reference it with the document that shows us what's appropriated or bonded, that garage is under a bonded?
Yes.
Okay.
And the STEM lab as well.
Okay.
Yeah, let's see if we can get there from here. Um, so that second document that's linked in here is the little grid that shows A's and B's appropriated is A and B is bonded.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Kate, um, I guess related to the, um, CIP budget, we had talked about that long-range planning line, which is scheduled to be appropriated, um, which currently has a hundred thousand dollars in it. Um, you know, if we were to continue, if the board was going to continue to move forward with the the project for the school, we would actually need to add money into that in order to have sufficient funds to fund this project, um, to to about two hundred and seventy five thousand more dollars. The question I think for you is, um, even if, you you know, the town council or some folks on town council have suggested that we may they may look to combine some of the big school, uh, some of the big town projects, so school, community center, and library into one and sort of pick them all back up as one move forward. Um, but kind of regardless of whether that happens or whether we decide to move forward on our own, the the need for the school doesn't go away that just because we're in a pandemic. So but if we're not going to use that project next year, we need to make a decision as to whether we keep that hundred thousand dollars in there. So I guess the question is, if we keep it in there, can we add to that year over year to sort of make up a balance for when we do do the project? And sort of utilize the funds, whether it's next year or the year after that, um, so that we have them in there as reserves for when we do decide to move forward?
That's a hard question for me to answer because it it goes to the funding source. Um, if we we can get budgetary authority for something in CIP and not spend it in that year, it is a multi-year program. So, for example, a good thing comes to mind, uh, roofing repairs that we had a a large repair at the high school. We had the money budgeted for, um, last year for the summer, and we did not spend it because we did a big, long, arduous bid process. And, um, it's only just now that we're getting around to getting that work done. So the money, the budgetary authority doesn't go away. Um, I don't know, however, whether the town would actually appropriate those funds since it's tax dollars, whether they would take those funds in the tax year in which the budget is approved, or if they would then have to raise taxes for it in an ensuing year if it was going to be appropriated. That part I don't know. It's not something that I have control over. Does that make any sense? I don't know if they would have to take the hundred thousand dollars this year and put it in the bank and wait for us for to put to add to it.
Gotcha. Is that something we can find out? Because I think that's going to, I mean, help us as we make our recommendation to the board.
I can certainly ask Ruth how that would work.
Yeah, I'm I'm struggling with this, too. I don't see a path for us putting three hundred and fifty thousand dollars away for the architect all in one budget year. And so I am very curious if there's a path for us to do it in increments like this and kind of create a savings account, for lack of a better word, for that investment or for that money that we know we're going to need to spend. Um, but if that isn't an option, um, and we are faced with needing to put the three hundred and fifty thousand into one single budget cycle, then that to me says that that one hundred thousand dollars that's being, um, budgeted for right now could be put towards something else.
Right, right. I'll I'll reach out to Ruth and ask her that question. Um, I know it's simple if it were bonded, because if it were bonded, you just wouldn't borrow the money until you were ready to use it. And we do that all the time where we have multi-year projects going on. Um, what I'm what I don't know is if it's scheduled to be appropriated, do they appropriate it in that current year and then save the money? Um, the other way of looking at it, too, would be, um, and we talked about this at another meeting, would be to think about the scope of work. And is there some work that can be done with that hundred thousand dollars that moves us forward? And that doesn't then expire or, you know, become less useful over time? And I I don't really know the answer to that. That's something that the building committee was thinking about. Uh, but I'll I'll find that out, uh, find out about the funding piece. Oh, Alicia, I think I I can hear you. Lost you.
Oh, sorry, I now have two mute buttons going on. Um, uh, did we ever ask the question if we if we can, um? Uh, did we ever ask the question if we, if we can um. Use the impact fees to fund the architect study?
Yeah, so that was the other question that we asked. Um. And they're bringing it up for discussion tomorrow night, town council.
Okay.
The feedback that I, I received was, I mean, they don't have a definitive vote on it yet, but I don't think we should get our hopes up.
That was the, that was the one that they were.
I received.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. That was the one that they were sort of lukewarm on. Okay.
Um, April, Alyssa, what other questions do you guys have?
Um, so the. Let me pull up my document. The most feedback that I've gotten from. Latest round is. About the assistant athletic director.
Same.
So that's on page, what, six? Um. It, it, is that, so that position is called an admin assistant position? But it's just referred to as the assistant athletic director? Is that right? Are they one in the same?
Yes, he's the administrative assistant for that department.
Okay. Um. But when people refer to the assistant athletic director, they refer to him. It's, it's, it's one in the same person?
Well, there isn't another person.
I'm just, I'm just asking because I've, I just want to make sure that I understand who's who. Um.
I, I don't mean to be snarky. I'm just, I haven't heard that.
Okay. Oh, I, that's the way he's referred to in the community, to me at least. Um, so. Is that, that's in a, an admin position?
It's an admin support position, I guess you'd say. It's, uh, he's in the same category as a central office administrative support team. So like payroll specialist or. Uh, special education admin assistant.
And who supervises the, the um. The overtime? And approves it?
Mike.
Okay.
Kate, along those same lines, do you know? I'm sorry, Alyssa.
No, go for it.
Do you? Or do either of you guys know? And if not, maybe you can get back to us for what the average overtime is for administrative assistants?
I don't know. I mean, it, they're such a diverse group. Some have no overtime, some. Have overtime. Um, I, I don't know that there's a sort of standard.
And is that under like a. Are they all under like a bargaining unit?
No, they're among the handful of us that don't belong to a bargaining unit. Central office administrative staff and central office administrators. Don't have bargaining unit.
So their overtime is, their overtime pay is the same or it, it could differ depending on the person?
Um, they have a salary table and yeah, their wages differ based on the person. So their overtime differs based on the person.
So that's not a salaried position?
No. There's no overtime in salaried positions. That's why, that's why they give them to us.
That's why who gives them to you?
People who want us to work longer. I'm being, I'm, I'm being sarcastic, Alyssa.
Oh, I know. I mean, I'm a salary employee and I work a, a lot of hours, so I, I just am trying to understand. How many, how many of? Um, the, it, those individuals do we have on the payroll that fall into that that are? Because I, what I want to flush out is who's getting overtime? And it's just showing up under payroll as part of their salary. And so it's unclear what their salary is versus what, what overtime is.
So, I wouldn't be able to tell you that off, off the cuff. I could tell you what people earned, like I could give you last year. Um, in that group. And again, it's a very diverse group, so um, it would really vary dependent on the, um, on the position. My guess is that we'll find that the overtime that's budgeted for the athletics department is going to be the most significant because of the fact that they work nights and weekends. And most of our other specialists don't work nights and weekends. Unless they're asked to do a specific task.
So could I ask to get the um. And then maybe I have to do this through you, Sarah, the, the, either the total. Breakdown for overtime in the district, like what those positions are so that we know. Or in the athletic department, I don't know what others feel about that.
I would, I would like to know at the very least what the impact overtime has. Um, and if, like I, you know, forgive me for, this hasn't come up before, but I. I didn't realize that we had employees that were getting overtime. And is that something that could be furloughed? I mean, can we, can we say absolutely or curtailed, whichever the correct word is? Um, you know, is that something that we could absolutely say no to for the FY twenty-one school year? Or is that? You know, something that is like Sarah said, I mean, Kate said is a product of the hours that there are. You know, on nights and weekends, but. If there, if they have a number of hours that they're expected to work during the week, that seems to me that it could be adjusted to account for the nights and weekends. Um, in order to. Put a stop on paying overtime. That being said, I, I'll be honest, I'm uncomfortable because this is a specific um, person's position that we're discussing, but furthermore, just, I'm having a hard time. With almost eighty thousand dollars um, for a position that um. Could be a classroom teacher and we're making some really hard decisions this year. And this to me is, is a very large um. Expense in salary.
So I'm hearing a couple of things. One is, um, can we, are we allowed to not have overtime? And of course, we can say, you know what, we're not going to have overtime. And if the work doesn't get done, then it doesn't get done. Um, you, you need to stay within your scheduled hours. There's a, a couple of issues around collective bargaining with the um. The uh, food service staff have a special rate that they get paid for doing catering after school hours. Custodians have a seniority list and call time and bus drivers as well, if they're driving trips. Um, are entitled to a seniority list and, and overtime. Um, we can take a look at what that amounts to. Um, and I, I think it would be probably a question that we would want to um, look into the individual contracts and. Um, see what the impacts might be. But in terms of central office staff, which we just said doesn't have a collective bargaining agreement. We can say today, there's not going to be any overtime available for any of that, those staff members. And if there's work that needs to be done, then someone else needs to be doing that that isn't going to get overtime for it.
Can I ask this question? What, um. Is it, how, how is it organized so that we have these hourly employees versus, versus salaried employees?
Well, wage and labor laws specify certain restrictions on who can be salaried. Um, who's an exempt employee. Um, and that's, that's state and federal labor law says that unless you have these certain characteristics. Of an executive position, you have to be paid hourly. So. Things like supervising other individuals, um, there's a, a salary level piece to it. Uh, but it's, there are some rules and regs around who can be salaried. Um, so a classic example is the, the superintendent's executive secretary. Gets to be salaried because she has to come to all the board meetings and she's getting overtime. Well, you, you really can't do that because that's not an exempt position. It's not an administratively exempt position under the law, so.
So that position actually sounds to me. As though it might fall into a salaried position. That's why I was asking that question.
Um, there's no direct supervision by uh, this individual of, of other staff. Now you could decide that you want a salaried position that is an administrative. Position in that department or in any other department and you could add that person and say, this is a salaried position and you supervise these people and these are the. The ways that you get to be a salaried person. Um, but it, it kind of sounds to me like we're trying to go in the opposite direction from that. That we're trying to, to make it more of a, a classic administrative assistant position that doesn't have overtime.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm just trying to avoid, I mean, in my mind, if, if that had been a salaried position, we probably wouldn't be in this quandary now. So I'm, I'm just trying to. Think about that a, as I'm trying to understand the positions moving forward, what, what makes sense moving forward? Because that could have been capped off, I think, if we had that.
Well, and, and one of the things to bear in mind about this very small group of people, there's only about a dozen people doing these jobs and they're in this. Um, non-bargaining unit, separate situation by the nature of their jobs because they do odd things. Uh, that are one-offs in the district. Um, there's, you know, there's only one person doing accounts payable and receivables and she has a very different set of duties from the person who sits next to her who manages the special education office.
So can we get that list? Um, Sarah, I don't know if the, the request has to come through you for the overtime positions? In, in the district, just so we understand what, what that is, what their responsibilities are when we're trying to make. Some of those decisions.
There's two questions in your question. One is, who are the central office administrative support staff? And then there's a question about overtime, because not all of those people would work overtime.
Well, I don't even know Kate, if they're in central office. That's why I'm asking the question. I don't know who they are.
So you want to know who works overtime. That's a different question.
And how much it is, yeah.
Okay.
And is that across all groups in the school district that you're looking for that for?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, that's easy enough to pull. I can get that.
Okay, thank you. Guys, before we move on, I did, just want to take a second. I'm getting um, quite a few comments that come in through the Q and A. I just want to remind everyone that per our board practice. Um, we do take public comment at the end of the meeting. Uh, and in order to make a public comment, we will ask that you just state your name and your address, just for the record. If you have to leave and you can't stay, you can always email publiccomment@scarlisschools.org and again, we'll read that into the. Record. Sorry, thank you. Go ahead, Alyssa, if you have more questions.
Is the admin assistant still in the budget? I thought that was the, the position that we had um, talked about removing.
Um, so far we've removed four thousand dollars, which is a portion of that job. Um, and Mike has told us that he is. Ready to take the rest of that job away, but there hasn't been any action taken on that offer.
Is that the, so is, was that the one that was at point eight?
Um, she was at point four.
The request, the, the initial request, Alyssa, was for her to go from point four to point eight, I believe. And then when we made our first round of reductions, she actually was going from point four to point two.
Okay, so this would reflect point two?
Um, the total that's left in the budget, let's put it this way, the total that's left in the budget for that position is fifteen, sorry, is eleven, seven, fifty-nine. So we could, we could use that as a further reduction to the budget that's on the table right now.
Oh, do you want to um, go ahead and ask some questions?
Oh, you cut out, Alyssa. What did you say?
Sorry, do you want to ask some questions?
Sure. So Kate, one of the things, first, you know, I, I'm struggling because I don't have paper. Um, so one of the things that.
I can't hear you, April. Can anybody else?
I can hear her.
Yes, I can hear her.
Thanks, Sarah. Want me to wait?
Who couldn't hear you?
Sarah.
Sarah, can you hear her now?
Doesn't look like it.
I don't think she can hear me either. Sarah?
Yeah, it seems like maybe if she logged off and just did a, a phone in, even though video is preferable, that might.
I'll text her.
Be more reliable.
I'm wondering if it's her headphones.
She generally uses them.
Right, true.
All right, Sarah says she's going to try and reconnect, but to just go on without her for a minute. Um, so my, I have a little bit of apprehension about that because she's the chair. I feel like my next request probably needs to go through her. Um, but I, in the interest of moving all of us forward as a group. Um, I'm feeling. A little bit of information overload and not, and, and I like, I like this, like I, this is my preferred. Method of being able to look at this so that I can say, okay, if we make X, Y, and Z reductions. This is the impact on the net budget. This is the impact on our overall tax request. And this is what the, you know, proposal that goes to town council and this is how it's going to impact the mill rate. And I feel like because we've dug so deep and we've had to make so many requests of you guys. That a little bit of the prioritization. You know, I, I'm not sure that we're all on the same page. I don't know. I, I don't, I'm not sure that the committee itself is on the same page. And I. I'm having a hard time looking at. The information that you gave us on the document for the weekend and inserting it into the tiers, for example. So, do you guys know what I'm saying? Do you know what I mean?
Yes, because that was my question sort of about the point four position where, you know, how does, where does that come into the tiers?
Right, and so it's our job as the finance committee to set the priorities and let the. Um, leadership council know, let Sandy, by extension, the leadership council know what our priorities are and then to ask Kate to. Help us put that into a document that we can present to the rest of the board. Um, but. I, I just feel like everything is a little bit scattered around. I I just feel like everything is a little bit scattered around. And so I'm wondering if, as a finance committee, do we now need to look at the information that was given to us on Friday, which is this document that Kate is sharing, and say, okay, yes, we would like to see these cost savings inserted into the the table that Kate created, and just go through the list and say, no, I can't support that being included in the cuts, or yes, I would like to see that included in the reductions. Because right now, we have all, I feel like we have all the information we could possibly now we just have to make our choices. And it's our job as a committee to put that forward to the board in a way that they, I mean, I I'm confident that they believe that we've asked all the questions and that we are making informed choices. But I still don't know what this all looks like now in order for it to all come together and say, okay, this is what the school board's finance committee's tier four recommendations look like, and here they all are in a big long list.
That would be great, I think, because we tend to flounder it just a little bit, that's very natural, but due to time, I just wonder if we could at least get to that point tonight, if possible.
Okay, well, I'm glad my instincts for what we need, what we need to do are in line with yours, Sandy. Um, Sarah and Alicia, what do you think? Like, how, what, how is the best way to move forward now and say as a committee, these are the reductions we would support seeing move to the top of these
I think that, oh, sorry, Sarah, go ahead. Well, we have seven minutes, right, and we need to discuss as a finance committee, what, now that we've asked our questions, well, seven minutes before questions open up, right, in theory. And and so we need to have the discussion about collectively what what our thoughts are. Can we confirm that before you move on?
So those are the two positions that are already in the tier four reductions. Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, so yes. Um, so additional instructional coach position reductions, oh, you you're speaking about, can you see this on the screen still? So you would take two more instructional coaches as long as they didn't bump an existing teacher. Go ahead, Diane.
I was just gonna say, the other piece that I would just caution you to consider is um what that support looks like according to phase. I appreciate the conversation about not wanting to lay anyone off, but if, you know, if those open positions are clustered at one specific phase, for example, we don't want one phase to have inequitable support and another phase to enjoy the same support that they've had. Do you understand kind of where I'm going with that? Does that make sense?
Well, how many, how many instructional coaches would that leave?
If you take two from middle school and two from Wentworth, middle school has basically none, point one, and Wentworth has one. That's what the grid up here is, the existing people. Um, so we've already taken one of Wentworth and one of middle school here in tier four, and then that would be another Wentworth and another middle school. Make sense?
So that's shifting four out of eleven? Wasn't the, what, wasn't eleven the number for the um instructional coaches?
For the whole, for the whole district.
Right. Well, I think Diane's point was that if you make those moves and you may have some inequities, and so I I was just trying to figure out, we'd have
Right, like the way I'm looking at it from what Kate is saying right now, Wentworth would be losing two coaches, and so that would be significant for one one specific school. I mean, I think anything is possible. It just depends on what the directive is or or the way that you want to see this happen. Because presumably, these folks hold similar certifications, um, at least within K to eight.
But 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 the question, I guess the, to to circle back, Sarah, you you were making sort of your statement of what you, where you were currently, and you indicated that you could support the instructional coach, coach reduction as, or shifting, if it was a shifting, is the way I understood it, and that, and my question was, is that in fact a shift, meaning that we're not gonna lose any jobs? And so I think they, what I understand is the answer is yes, and we're still retaining over half of the um instructional coaches.
I think if you look down at the third bullet, it kind of um explains the thought process behind this number. So the new position would be at eighty-one thousand dollars, which is that target number that we utilize for teacher positions. Um, when we think about hiring new teachers, because we have to take into account benefits um, that people might choose, whether they choose individual benefits, family benefits, et cetera. Um, okay, you had it, and now you've moved it. Come back to me. Um, and then because we're trying to encapsulate the critical pieces of of these three different roles into one, we would have to carve out some of this um into teacher stipended work. Um, such as um the the piece under the library media specialist um to do, and again, you can see the bulleted list of the things that that need to happen. I'm happy to bring Monique in to also speak more to this, if you would like that.
Wait, I don't understand. So you can't just pay them eighty-one thousand dollars for this new position?
You can pay them eighty-one thousand dollars for a position, but as you all started the conversation with, there's a whole lot to, for one person to now do three people's work.
Yeah.
Correct, so for example, um, you know, one of those people right now holds a library media specialist certificate. We probably would be hard pressed to find a three for one person. Who is that credential holder?
I could add some more thinking to that. What we're trying to do is to um leverage um, as many of these pieces as possible. Um, as Diane said, it is going to be quite challenging to find one position. Um, but in terms of the library media piece, um, we talked about several different ideas, whether that be additional funding, whether that be adding um days to the library media specialists fall under the teacher contract, adding days in order to accomplish those tasks to their contracts. Um, we just don't know what that might look like at this point, um, depending on who and where they are in the salary range, how much that would cost. Um, and in terms of that new position, um, that is the estimate that we use with all new positions. Uh, and so that is to make sure that we have enough funding um uh, available, um, so that includes salary and benefits. Um, and so we would be asking someone to do those pieces or have those responsibilities, but get paid less, and most likely it would be a um central office staff position rather than a salaried position. Um, which um, that was our thinking, anyway.
Right, and for the position, do bear in mind that it's not an eighty-one thousand dollar salary, that's a combination of salary and benefits.
So we would be trying to um do more with less in that position, and those pieces, if they're unable to be done, they um, they sit. Things just take longer to accomplish.
Um, I'm okay. I'm happy to have at least a little bit of better understanding of um a path forward, and if we're gonna use Thursday lies our recommended questions, and hopefully they give us a little bit more clarity.
So it would be helpful for me, Sarah, to know if you would like us to come wait to hear the directive or the the feedback from town council tomorrow, and then for April and I to come prepared um for the meeting on Thursday to have that discussion with you or come with our own thoughts, or what, how do you, do you want to work it out as a group, or or? My, so my concern about that is that if it's the 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 two percent, I think that that's easy, and then if we, if we start getting the COVID stuff and that's different, then that's gonna be a whole different conversation that I don't know that I can formulate in a day or two days. Well, actually, it'll be a day, because we'd get the information tomorrow, so I I think my plan will be to get as much as I can for the, for the, for the two percent. If that's okay.
Uh, so the first person that's listed is Brianna Kelman. So she should be on any
Hello, can you hear me? Hi, Brianna Kelman, two twenty Pine Point Road in Scarborough. I'm here today just speaking as a teacher. Um, so thank you for the opportunity to speak and for the work you're doing. I know it's not easy. Um, I'm the department chair of the world languages at Scarborough High School and a Spanish teacher. I just wanted to speak to support the written communications from my department members over the last several weeks regarding the digital world language subscriptions for our students that are now being cut from the budget proposal. Um, it's important for me to say that we're not frivolously making a budget request to ask for a shiny new curriculum when we know resources are scarce. We're asking for this funding to provide continuity of essential digital resources for nearly one in four students at Scarborough High School. These resources empower students to learn to practice all modes of communication, listening, reading, writing, and speaking in the Spanish language. And they also aid teachers in delivering a quality foreign language experience. So we've relied on the digital learning platform for almost a decade, and those licenses are now expiring. We simply do not have other resources for students to fall back on. So loss of access to this platform will be devastating for So loss of access to this platform will be devastating for our Spanish program. It's especially important right now as distance learning and teaching probably are going to be a part of our lives into the future. Having a digital platform available is how we were able to deliver curriculum for the last three months of this school year. In my most recent communication sent this weekend, my colleagues and I shared with you some data that demonstrate and support why subscriptions for the online platform are necessary for students to continue achieving in our program at a high level. So we're asking for your help to maintain the current strength of our program, offer students tools to learn and teachers to do their jobs. And hopefully you'll consider all this information that we provided to you when you're making your final decisions. So thank you for your time with that. And as an aside, I just wanted to mention that the document that you have, the FY twenty one budget review document that you reviewed today lists the requested amount for Scarborough High School as eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty. However, the current request, there's been a couple iterations of it, is currently at nine thousand six hundred and sixty and provides materials for students in just Spanish one through three. I just wanted to clarify that for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just note that real quick here. What was in the budget right now is the eighteen seven fifty. And we have Bree's new amount of ninety, whatever it is. I think it's a reduction of ninety thousand. I wish it was of nine thousand, which has not, has not been booked yet. Because again, these are all decision points. So what you're seeing with the eighteen thousand right there is what we have in the budget today. And we can certainly make that adjustment as part of our discretionary fund reductions.
Can we put that in the, the items in motion chart?
Yes, you do, Lou McKeon. The original budget request was for text, classroom sets of texts, as well as the online subscriptions. What Bree did, working with her department, they said we will forego the student texts this year and only do use the online. Brianna, correct me if I'm wrong on that. That was my understanding.
Yeah, that's, that's right. The original request was for a six-year subscription because that's what each language typically does. And that was for levels one through four. And so in between now and the last few iterations, it's come down to just Spanish one through three. So those are the most critical levels to focus on with the transition and just for about two hundred and ten students.
I should bring that person in.
Hello? Oh, great. I have the full line open, so I'll disconnect that. There's no echo. So thank you for the meeting today. It was very helpful. My concern is that I'm not in town. I'm a resident. And I think that I would like to know if, you can just talk about the pandemic for two minutes. So we have like sixty seconds of your time. Can you hear me okay?
Pursuant to our policy, could you please state your name and address?
Oh, Anne Pillsbury in Scarborough. And my concern is that I think that the school budget should be revised and IT security folks, two or three, a lot of people right now are hacking schools, banks, businesses in the U.S., people from this country as well as overseas. This morning, for example, the American Humane Society website was hacked and some Japanese thing was up there. So anyone clicking on that website could have had their computer compromised. I know this because this is something that is in my line of work. So my suggestion for the school board would, in school budget, people in Scarborough schools as well as the town would be to potentially hire more people in IT security, secure your, your town website, train all of the families in Scarborough, do some like training sessions to say, please only use Zoom web-based. If you use the Zoom client, download your computer, you will get hacked. There's a lot of security issues. Just use a Chromebook. Don't, don't use Zoom on your family computer. Have an empty computer, as I'm using now, with no personal information. Just use a web-based Zoom to secure your personal data on your own home computers. My other suggestion would be to bump, bump, bump up the online learning because I personally am not sending my child to school in the fall. Until there's a, until the pandemic is calmed down, there's a vaccination, there is no way I will send my child to school where he will be an innocent child and my daughter will be an innocent daughter and maybe lick something or touch something or share sports equipment or something will happen where they will get coronavirus and die, to be frank with you. So I would like to know if you can bump up all your online learning tools. We'll all get through this together. And then when there's a vaccination and when everyone will be safe and not die, then the kids can go back to school. Then we can resume all these great things in your budget, like, you know, sports and things that normal families enjoy at school. We love school. We love having that community. Scarborough's the best town. But I really think you should consider that there's a pandemic and South Korea just opened up their schools and they're a very safe country. And they all got sick, these children, and they closed them back down. So go to the news, keep up with the trends and realize that if you open your schools, you're setting yourself up for children possibly dying or going to the hospital or being hospitalized. So I think you also should think about adding some more nurses, adding some doctors, adding some medical staff to your school budget because that's what's gonna happen when these children get sick. And that's my comment. And I'm not sending my children to school. So I'm trying to look into home-based school, school options through Scarborough School District since that's where we live, until there's a vaccination or a vaccine. And I think you should really understand that I'm not the only person.
Okay. Can you hear me? Sorry, I'm trying to go in between screens. Can you hear me now? Okay. I just, I, I came into the meeting a little bit late, so I apologize if this has already been covered. But I did have two questions about the form or the information that you posted that I'm hoping someone can answer for me. So my first question is on page nine of the document. It says, in the category that says potential actions to consider, there are four or three boxes at the end of that. Reducing funding for curriculum investments, reduce funding for administrative positions, and reduce funding for instructional coach positions. And I noticed they were blank. I just was curious as to are, are those things that we're not looking at any more reductions from? Or just wondering why those were blank for potential more actions to consider? And then my other question before that one, before I forget is, on the next page, you talk about capital or the capital improvements budget is presented. And I was just looking at the priorities column. There's a lot of stuff here and they all have high priority. Are these things, because they are high priority, either put in for whoever put them in as high priority? Does that mean if you are quote unquote allowed to look at these CIP things, we're not gonna look at anything labeled as high or medium high priority? Because I, I know that at the last school board meeting, one of the things that was discussed was looking at the CIP stuff. And some of these things were mentioned at both town council level and school board level. But I'm just seeing high priority across the board. Does, does that mean someone has determined that if the CIP can be accessed and I guess manipulated, for lack of a better term, that because of the, these have been labeled high priority, we're not gonna consider them at all? So those are just two kind of questions or wonders that I had when I was looking at this document. So thank you. Yeah, that was what I was trying to go back and forth with, Sarah, when, when I, when you guys called on me. It was to see are some of these items bonded versus appropriated already?
You can find it in that second CIP document. You have to cross-reference them. The problem is that they, sometimes they're not named the same thing. So it's hard, hard to tell which one's which. But that's, that's what I've been doing.
Okay, thank you.
That's my understanding. And also just needs, so you know, I mean, all of this is has opportunity to take a second swipe look at anything that is in the budget. So even though we may call things high priority or priority or low priority, it's always good to go back and review. And there can be things that could be added or taken out. So it's a starting point. It helps us get organized, but it's not locked, locked in necessarily as a high priority that's gonna stay necessarily.
And I appreciate that. I just, I think that I personally just need to hear that over and over and over again because I, I will get back on my soapbox. I need people and not things right now. So the more I hear that, the, the better I feel about this whole process. So, so thank you for going through that again. Thanks.
Now, I, I just want to say thank you for giving us this additional iteration of the budget. I know that it's time consuming. I know it's frustrating because it's all stuff you feel passionately about. And so it's difficult and that we may not be on the same page. So and I think it's important that we all remember that we're all trying to do the best that we can through this process. Thank you.